Okay, good evening. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. I would like to start by explaining the format of tonight's meeting. The Board of Education provides two opportunities for you to express your ideas and share your thoughts. The first will be after we receive an update from our superintendent. The second will be after our meeting has concluded. Both sessions will be thirty minutes in duration and all speakers will be limited to three minutes to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. People, please approach any one of the microphones in front of the auditorium. Please state your name prior to beginning your comments that the district clerk can accurately reflect the events of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Rogers will let you know when you have thirty seconds left so you can wrap up your comments before the end of the three minutes. You must be stationed at a microphone to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the board. The Board of Education respects the varied opinions of the community and will provide a comfortable and safe environment. Any behaviors that threaten the integrity of tonight's meeting will not be tolerated and will cause the Board of Education to adjourn the meeting. Complaints or challenges should follow procedures listed under Policies fourteen hundred, fourteen ten, and/or fourteen forty, which are included on the materials table. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire, and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The first ten rows in the auditorium should use the exit to my left. Those in the back of the room should use the rear doors and exit the building to the left. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. D'Amico may have a motion to amend the order of business.
I make a motion to amend the order of business contained in the public meeting agenda set forth in Policy two-three-five-zero to allow the board to vote upon the consent agenda, review and vote on discussion and action items, and consider discussion items prior to the superintendent's update during the March second, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one A through D, two A through R, and three A through G. Be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Zakian, you have a lot of draft policies to discuss.
We do, but it's very simple. Tonight's policy proposal is one of multiple updating of policies. The Board may recall that Policy fifty-four sixty, child abuse, maltreatment, or neglect in a domestic setting, was presented in January's meeting. The policy and its corresponding regulations specifically addressed educational law and social services laws, and it required school districts to provide current and newly hired employees mandated reported training. One aspect of that policy revision was the term guidance counselor was moved to school counselor. As a result of seeing that for that particular policy, my office performed the forensic review of the policy book to identify additional policies that included the term guidance counselor, and we found twelve such policies. As a result, the policy committee is proposing that the word guidance counselor be changed to reflect school counselor in these twelve policies. There were absolutely no additional changes to these respective policies, just that word to be consistent with the state recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time. Okay, thank you. This policy, these policies will be on the agenda for April. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zakian. Mr. DeFandini?
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. This evening, I have a few updates that I think are particularly relevant to obviously the last several weeks of school. Most notably, obviously, today was our first day in schools without a mask. The mask update or the mask requirement was lifted by the governor beginning today. So in alignment with that, the Board of Education and the administration had sent communication out to the staff, had meetings with staff, communications with the parents, letting everybody know that today was going to be our first day. Again, barring things that I might not necessarily be aware of, but through my conversations with other staff members, principals, and the like, today was a very smooth day. We had students that didn't wear them, we had students that did wear them, we had staff members that wore them, we had staff members that didn't wear them. With thanks to our staff, with thanks to our wonderful student body here, we were able to navigate this first day, I think, pretty successfully, knowing full well there could have been other things that could have come up as a result of it. We didn't see any of that stuff. I'm very proud, very proud superintendent today to tell you that today went, I think, as smoothly as it could have gone. Again, not to say that there's not with exception. There probably might have been an exception here and there that we're not aware of, but in large or en masse, it was a very successful first day. An update on the Aquatic Center. Again, some good news there. We are making great progress on the Aquatic Center. We are now fully enclosed and the building is now heated. So we are at a place where we're able to start to work on those interior finishes. Painting has begun in many of the areas throughout the building. You're going to start to see the mud floors that are coming into play, tile work that's going to start to come into play, and even installation of fixtures. You already see some of the showers that are being installed. So we are making great progress right now. There are some things, obviously, that cause us concern, you know, getting to the end of a project. There are always things that could come up that aren't foreseen, but we're proud again of the progress that we've made on the Aquatic Center, and we are still hopeful for an opening of the Aquatic Center where we would be able to have it available for the Special Olympics, which would be our target at this point in time. Again, there are things that could come up. I will certainly keep the board updated as we get a little closer to that timeframe, but they are working hard, you know, to try to meet that deadline. Aligning with the Special Olympics, as promised, we sent out a communication asking the community to get involved in the Special Olympics from a volunteer perspective and/or taking over the responsibility of one of the booths as part of the Olympic Village. We've had a tremendous outpouring of support. We've started to collect some of the data. We have hundreds of people that have already volunteered their time from an individual perspective, and as of this afternoon, I have over twenty-five different people looking to set up various booths as part of the Olympic Village. So on top of that, most of the youth organizations around the community have reached out to me to ask whether or not they could participate in it by creating fans in the stands, right, having students with posters, cheering on our athletes as part of the opening ceremony, being escorts for the student athletes during the actual day. So the interest level is enormous, and we're very excited to see how that plays out over the course of the next couple of weeks, and again, I'll continue to keep you updated on that. Some sad news. Just before our last meeting, the Board of Education was made aware of the fact that one of our former assistant superintendents, Dr. Robert Schultz, passed away. Dr. Robert Schultz was a legend around these parts, having served in the capacity of almost every position you can imagine, moving his way all the way up to assistant superintendent level. Sadly, he did pass about a month ago. Our thoughts and our prayers are with his family, and we are planning on doing some special things in honor of him as we approach the spring month. So we've been working with the family on a potential scholarship. We've also been working with the family about doing something special for Dr. Schultz in the courtyard of Howitt Middle School. So more to come on that front, but we will certainly honor him and his legacy that he left here in the schools. Budget season is upon us. As crazy as that might sound, we are now beginning to prepare ourselves for public presentations. Mr. Motisi and his team have been working hard over the course of the last couple of months getting the budget in final form. We will continue to work with the Board of Education to get ourselves at a place within the next couple of weeks that we will be prepared to present the initial budget to the board, and we will, as we always do, involve the community in an interactive process and ultimately adopt a budget that we think that the community will approve and support as we approach that Super Tuesday in May. And the last one is just a couple of events that have transpired during the month of February. It's a pretty quiet month. In February, it's, you know, just after the holidays and we have the week-long break in there. But we did have a couple of things that are of note. One is, we had a concert at Farmingdale High School that was really unbelievable, really, really well done, was televised. I had a chance to see it virtually. I wasn't able to be there live, but I did get a chance to see it virtually. It was fantastic. Teachers did a great job, as always. And the other one is we had a special presentation over at Farmingdale High School by our Real Harmony Club to kick off Black History Month, and they also did a very, very unbelievable job, you know, kicking off Black History Month for here in Farmingdale Schools. So with that, any questions that the board has on anything? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeFandini. I'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to thirty minutes, and each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold a timer for us. If we do not get to all of the speakers during the first thirty minutes, we will reopen later in the meeting to continue. The meeting will now open for thirty minutes.
Jeff Roth, address on file. Let's do this again, one-minute warning. All right, now that the crescendo is over. Maybe you could throw a little reverse reverb into it. All right, in August and December, I questioned which phase are you in on the energy performance contract? I also asked about the measurements and verifications. Wasn't the first phase supposed to be all the lighting replaced? So are all the buildings' energy-efficient lights completed? Because Woodward and Albany Avenue still have the perimeter lights that are still the orange sodium vapor and not the converted to LED. In twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, when I believe you did Phase One, when it was on the committee, I brought up about your lighting timers for the old lights and parking lot lights, which these were the not replaced and the energy-efficient, why your timers kept having the lights go on. So did you upgrade the timing system? Because for some reason, and I verified today, your perimeter and parking lights are going on around five o'clock, five fifteen, and the sun is out. So obviously, maybe perhaps you didn't adjust it, but I thought the upgraded timers, you're able to, through your building management controls, get them back online. I mean, look, if you were on a two percent cap in your home, wouldn't you make sure lights that didn't have to be on during the day were shut off? Your thirty-six million dollar bond, which included the Aquatic Center, I thought Albany Avenue and Northside's fields were going to be included in that. Why hasn't any work been done on both those fields? The other elementary schools had work done. I was wondering if you could explain why the fire department responded to a call at Farmingdale Senior High School on Saturday, February twenty-sixth? Rumor has it, though, you know, it's not wise to listen to rumors. Was it a ventilator motor? I mean, weren't those motors supposed to be replaced in the energy performance contract?
Mr. Roth, you're at the minute point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My second question is, you know, being that, you know, in the nineties, I first upgraded the fire alarm systems. I thought the fire alarm systems now were supposed to be upgraded to have smoke detection in the classrooms and the offices, where they only originally had it in the hallways. So I would like to know why the fire department responded to a call and if there was any damages. Let's see here. You know, are you still using the school dude reservation to reserve public building spaces? Because I have a question about that. Whereas when you, when an outside person reserves public property, do they have a right to make it invitation-only? From my understanding is, you cannot reserve public property and make an invitation-only. You could sell tickets and maximum occupancy. Is the time up?
Yes, sir.
All right, I mean, I would love for you to zoom in and see how many people are in the audience today that are just dying to come up to this microphone to speak.
Mr. Roth, you asked a couple of good questions, and some of them I can answer right away. Some of them we'll take back and answer as part of Old Business. The fire department did respond, as stated, in February during the break due to one of our motors in one of our unit ventilators that was smoking. And no, there wasn't any damage caused as a result of the smoking motor. You asked another question about, are we still using the school dude system? The answer to that question is yes. There are rules as part of education law that are governed, how and which we're allowed to allow our facilities to be used. I'll certainly have a more detailed response to that portion of the question as part of next week's, I'm sorry, next month's Old Business. And a couple of your other questions require a little bit more work, and we'll certainly work on that as part of Old Business. Yeah, if you could just, Jeff, if you could just wait till the second public participation, please.
No, you'll come up, you can, no, you can come back up in the next three minutes, Mr. Roth. Your next three minutes, you can come up as the next one. Thank you, Mr. Roth. You can come up in the next three minutes. Would anybody else like to speak at this point in time?
That's all I'm asking.
Would anybody else like to speak at this time?
Obviously not, Goldberg.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Mr. Morrow, would you like to speak?
Listen. Eric Morrow, twenty-five Dale Drive, Farmingdale, New York. I think Jeff clouds his good thoughts with outrageous behavior. So his thoughts that are good get thrown away, Jeff. I've told you this already. Thank you. I won't take three minutes. Unanimous, having the agreement and consent of all. You're welcome, Michael. Until Webster changes the definition, like they did the vaccine just a few months ago. I just want to say, I don't know if I'm spilling the beans, but congratulations to Mr. Brennan. That's absolutely phenomenal. Massapeek was very lucky to have you. So I hope you're staying until the end, but you really deserve that one. So now, I know the board has a real lot of work to replace two assistant superintendents with Mr. Zakian leaving as well. So Paul, good luck with that. And then from there, who's hiring the teachers and what words and how they behave according to what you guys are asking them to teach versus what they're teaching will be very interesting. I'm here today because I knew this would happen. You know, people come out when they have a battle, and they don't know how it happens, and they don't know why, right? And you can't be a hypocrite. You can't not go the first day that kids don't have a mask on, right? So I know that you guys navigated, you know, troublesome water for two years, and, you know, you took a lot of vitriol, but I wanted to thank you for navigating those waters as well. Paul's audio to everybody was spot-on. You know, some people do things clumsy, but no one had a book. It's like raising a kid in that regard. You know, you have the kid, and there's no book for it. And in this regard, there was no book for what we just went through. I just hope that you've learned from some of those mistakes and that we don't just blindly follow guidance ever again. So that includes, you know, what's going to come, because we know that it's not ending at the masks the way it is right now, hopefully at least through the twenty-two election. And then we'll see where we go from there. And then I wanted to know if we could figure out a way to really help these children understand what just happened in the last two years where there's some type of program or some ability to really explain why, you know, March first, they were in a mask, March second, they weren't. Boogeyman, no boogeyman. I think that, you know, teachers and everyone really need to regroup. And like I was saying to our school principals at Northside, who are wonderful, I said, unfortunately, this world has put you in a realm that you're ruining your legacy, or you've ruined your legacy. My son's in fifth grade. He had great memories until the end of third, and now the last year and a half, two years, has been, put your mask up, you're in trouble for this, you're in trouble for that. And trouble is a scary word for a kid, even when they realize it's not really big trouble. And to really regroup that and get these kids their ability to talk to these principals and higher-ups again and really gain that trust and respect going forward, I think is very important that you guys really build on that. Because the truth of the matter is, they have definite trust issues with the authorities, and it's going to stay longer, provided we don't do something to explain why everything had to happen that way, regardless. Is that a minute or thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds, sir.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to, again, thank you all very much, but also know that we have to stay diligent. We have to fight through this. We need more people to continue to go to the board because we got to make sure that it doesn't happen again that way. We were obviously all sleeping at the wheel. It wasn't just one of us. It wasn't just the board. It wasn't just superintendents. No one knew it was coming. Now you can't say that. So people have to show up. All you people on YouTube, everything, you got to show up. Got to be consistent. So thank you, and good luck to everyone. Love Farmingdale.
Tom Alessandro, address on file. So I think you're very kind, give a lot of good credit to folks here, but at the end of the day, my feeling is you guys did not stand up for our kids when we needed you to stand up. And I am very concerned what's going to come down the line. It's time that you guys stand up for our kids. You say you make a vote and stuff, but the truth is, the vote is not going to, didn't happen until after the decision was made by the governor. What we need you to do is be proactive, put our kids first, and what's most important for them, to have them succeed in their lives. Bigger concern that I have is the Bigger concern that I have is the level of education that our kids are receiving. I don't feel that they are getting a great education here at Farmingdale, which really breaks my heart. When my wife and I moved here, we looked at the Farmingdale School District, it was one of the reasons why we came here. When you go on to Zillow, which is when a new family is looking for somewhere to go, that's where they're going to go, and look to see where, what the schools are rating. Using great schools' ratings, our school district, schools do not come out very high. I understand from conversations, which I appreciate the time that you took to talk with us, that you don't use that as a metric. I understand why, because it doesn't put us, schools, in a good light. I would like to find out a little bit more, I know that you use certain other metrics, other things that you guys look to evaluate yourselves. I'm just not clear on what that is. I would also like to understand, what do you evaluate yourselves? Are we doing, do we have a strong, strong school district? Are our kids doing very well? We had a great parent a couple of months ago ask for the school state test, and because they were never sent to us as parents. The very next morning, we all got them. It's a shame that we have to wait for a parent to ask for our state test results for our kids. It's a red flag, something's not right there. So please, if you could just explain how you evaluate, what metrics you use, do you use year-over-year? And are we in a good standing, according to what you guys are looking at and evaluating? Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Alessandro, it was nice to speak with you and your wife the other day. So I think this is a two-part. One is, obviously, as part of Old Business, we could certainly prepare something more thoughtful than what I would just spin off right here at the microphone, so we'll certainly do that as part of Old Business for the next meeting. But between now and then, there's no reason to wait for whatever it is response that we're going to give as part of the Old Business. I would recommend, you could certainly reach out to Dr. Olson. She is our curriculum and instruction assistant superintendent, who could certainly go into great detail with you through, like, an interactive conversation, which might be more meaningful than just a response that you would get as part of Old Business. But we will put something into the Old Business to respond to the inquiry that you made today.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak at this point? Okay. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the January 12th, 2022 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 12th, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2022 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
So the Board of Education received two emails this past month that thanked both all of you, as well as the administration, for the letter that was sent out to Governor Hochul. Also, earlier in the month, prior to that letter being sent out, we had received a copy of a letter that the Seaford Schools had sent to the governor. And that was it for this month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the board?
Sure, I'll start, if you don't mind. Okay, first of all, from the Farmingdale Public Library. Reminder that April 5th, starting at 7:30 in the morning, it's the library budget vote. Obviously, we encourage everybody to go out and vote. Masks are now optional at the library. The district has provided the library with COVID tests to distribute to the public, so if you're looking for any COVID tests, the Farmingdale Public Library has some for you. March 15th, absentee ballots for the library elections will be in the director's office. So if you need an absentee ballot, or if somebody needs an absentee ballot, they should contact their office there. Starting April 1st, I'm happy to announce our very own Wall of Fame inductee, Krista Lucarelli, takes over as the new library director. I wish Krista the best. On March 22nd, they will hold their board meeting and their budget meeting at 6:00 PM at the public library. Also on that day, March 22nd, voter registration will be open on that day from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. March 22nd, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM voter registration. Now I'd like to talk about something that we're very proud of. This Board of Ed here, four years ago, we were able to start our competitive cheer team. The first year, they were a JV team. The next year, they were state champions. Amazing, as a varsity. Then, of course, we've had COVID, and then they bounced back this year, they came back this year, and they went down to Florida to compete in the national championships, and they made it to the semifinals of the national championships. So think about that, in four years, a state championship and a semifinals in a national competition. Amazing what Coach W has done with that group of young ladies, and it shows the grit and determination of those girls. I mean, just in a few short years to really, along with that, and we're very happy to report also, a few months ago, we were able to approve, as a board, that, you know, we, the classification process for middle school students to be able to play varsity sports. Well, we're happy to report that this year, we had three young athletes, a basketball player, a swimmer, and a cheerleader, actually, who were able to move up and made major impacts on their team. And we're very happy, including that cheerleading team that went to this national semis, a basketball player who was phenomenal, and a swimmer who did very good things on the varsity team. So as a board, we're very proud of those accomplishments by those athletes and by our cheerleading squad. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so February 7th, I attended the district safety committee meeting. You know, I just want to mention, Mr. Zakin has led the committee, the safety committee, for quite some time right now. And one of the great things about that committee is that it is comprised of community members, parents, PTA, teachers, central admins, psychologists, we have a lot going on there. But with everything, since COVID, it never took a backseat. Safety was obviously very paramount before COVID took place, and it never, we never took, like I said, a backseat on that. It's always been at one of the top things to make sure that our buildings are safe, our students, our faculty, of course, and that we, as parents, feel safe when we send our students to school every day. So always a great attended meeting. February 9th, as Paul mentioned, was the high school concert. I attended as a parent, and of course, always a board member. And I always have to mention our music department, because it is just, it fills the needs of so many students with different needs, and there was jazz ensemble, jazz chorus, dello acapella, symphonic band, and ninth-grade bands. And the music pieces they chose were phenomenal. You close your eyes, you honestly think you're at a professional concert. The teachers, the students, and of course, the support by all the parents is really second to none. I know Mr. Gavallis and a couple of our directors held the accelerated class workshop. I was not able to attend, there was a conflict of meetings that night, but I did go on the Howitt Middle School website and was able to access that meeting. So I thought that was a really interesting meeting as well, because it gave you the option to know what your kids might have options for, for eighth grade, moving forward. And I guess lastly, aside from attending a few of the PTA meetings, was a little bit of normalcy that I haven't been able to experience in a while, but Septa was able to have their Valentine's Day wooden rose sale. And I've volunteered at that before, but being in the buildings and working with the elementary schools, the students, rather, coming in with a dollar to pick up a wooden rose to raise money for our special education students, and coming and saying, my mom loves red roses, or my grandmother likes yellow, and then they're buying, you know, purple flowers instead, you know, they all have a mind of their own. And half of the students take the flowers, and we're handing them off to their aides in the lunchroom or to teachers. And that really was a testament about how impacting these individuals are to our students. So it was always a pleasure to be a part of that and to be back in the building assisting the kids, and of course, Septa. That's it, thank you.
Coming up shortly, I'm going to put Ms. Olson on the spot here. We have the Parent Academy coming up, I'd like you to speak about that, please.
Hi. Next Wednesday night, there is a K-8 parent-focused math parent university. It is filled with opportunities for parents to get support on how to support their child at home in mathematics. There will be tons of sessions. Today, a district blast went out highlighting all the sessions. Parents can use a Google form. It went out at 11:00. By 11:20, we had over 40 families already sign up for it. We were very excited. I haven't got a chance to look again to see where the numbers are now, but please, send it out. We're going to send another blast out from each individual building, from the four elementaries and Howitt tomorrow, and then we'll send another one on Tuesday, the night before the event. There will be refreshments there as well. It will start with an overarching presentation by all the math specialists, K-8, around the number routine called Number Talks. Number Talks have been part of our instructional strategies over the course of the last few years, and we want to highlight it for our parents. It really supports number sense. And then there'll be three different sessions that parents can choose, specific, wherever they want, whatever they want to learn about, fractions, decimals, however you want to support your child. There will be also specific sessions that will have a Spanish translator there for our Spanish-speaking families as well. We're very excited, we're trying, just so you know, in case you can't attend, we do have every session, we pre-recorded the session and recorded it, so that will go up on the website, but we really didn't put that out there, because we're really hoping that parents come, because there's a lot of hands-on manipulatives and support materials that we provide during the parent university. We're very excited about this, and we're hoping that this parent university is the start of many to come. We really want to hope that we have almost seasonal ones moving forward. So we invite everybody to come, please spread the word, we're very excited about it.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Kathy Roth.
Thank you. Okay, the policy committee has met several times. Mr. Zakin had talked about the conversations we've had, actually, discussion was had with the committee. The items were, are on the agenda today for discussion. We have a policy meeting on Friday, and, yes, yes. The wellness committee's meeting tomorrow, virtually, and just double-checking that on Maureen. Got it. And I'm reporting on youth council, where youth council programs are underway, still underway for the winter part of the program. We have tennis coming around in the spring. Everything is found on the website for youth council, which is FarmingdaleYouthCouncil.org. We also have, and I'm going to mention, probably for the last time, at the board meetings, a scholarship, there's two scholarships from youth council community service. The information is on the youth council website and also can be found in the guidance department. The papers have to be due back by, they're due back right now from March 14th, so that's right around the corner. It's for seniors in our community, high school seniors, that will be moving on and going to colleges or trade schools. So please, if you know some senior kids, please get ahold of them and make sure that they able to make the applications and send them in. It's quite a nice scholarship, $1,000 each one, so that goes a long way still. The summer, well, another, well, summer program I'll mention, right now, it's slated to start June 27th and end July 29th. Paperwork will be going out for the CITs and kids that actually were counselors in the past, in probably a month or so. And the summer program and all the youth council programs really depends on the budget passing, because it would be too expensive for us to, and our organizations pretty much, to have our programs at the cost that we'd have to pay. The programs under the youth council are many of our community programs, and they each are having some startup registrations for their particular sports, should it be soccer, or baseball, or PAL. Please check either the youth council website or each individual website for their information. Parent links go out for their registration, so please don't miss it. It's a time now for our kids to get out there and really have some fun and get in the air and be together with their sibling, well, siblings or their community friends. So please look into that. And for the first time, I'm going to, I'm going to mention this, the Junior League of Women's Club does have scholarships each year for our seniors. They just offered another scholarship, it's based on community service. I don't know if the kids know about it as of yet, because the Junior League does have several other scholarships. This particular one is for community service, it can be found on the guidance website, there's paperwork in the guidance, and that is due back by April 30th, so just be aware of that, too, please. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation. Once again, please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes, and each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. The meeting will now be open.
Does anybody in the audience want to speak, because I like to go last? Huh?
I'll go. Eric, again, record on file. I don't have to follow Jeff. Good job, Jeff. Thank you for mentioning the cheer team. My daughter was that eighth grader, and I'm very proud of her. Florida was great. But it did, was brought to my attention, and I'm always doing other stuff, that they're a little underfunded in some regard. They still have uniforms that girls are passing down. My daughter had to get a uniform from a senior just to get the right skirt, so maybe we could look into that. I just want to make sure that the district, as of today, March 2nd, they do, it was passed by New York State, that they can inoculate or vaccinate children on school grounds via the nurses. I just want to make sure that this district has no plans to implement that, and if they do decide to implement something like that, they will let us know. I know as of right now, it says written consent, but there are, there is a certain guidance that says implied consent is of the day that you would say there's inoculations happening. So if your kid is in school that day, and you didn't realize it was that day, they can be inoculated without regard. So just want to make sure that you guys can answer that next time or whenever. I do want to make sure that I am not absolving any one of the last two years. I think that we need to move forward, though. So I'm not saying that you did all the leadership or whatever, I know it was clumsy, but I want to make sure that you guys don't do that again, that we go forward from here. And that's the water statement, the professor who holds the glass of water. And it's six ounces, and he says, how long can you hold this? And if you're holding it for one minute, great, if you're holding it for 10 minutes, gets a little heavier. An hour, a week, a year, how long can you hold the water? We need to put the water down, and we need to move forward, so that way we can never let it happen again. And again, parents, I'm talking to you. It only happens if we're not watching. So if we want, and Mr. Alessandro, you're right, but if we want it to get better, we have to be involved. This is not enough. So it's just as much on us, the board can only do what they could do. I own a business, I've hired bad people. Unfortunately, they don't have that ability sometimes to get rid of that bad person, all right? don't have that ability sometimes to get rid of that bad person, all right? The union is extremely strong. And I'm not saying they're all bad. I think for the most part, we're good. But they're obviously bad in everything, just like there's good in everything. Most, if not almost 90% of the teachers in this district are phenomenal. And whatever that rating is, we can get it up. We can get it better. And parents need to do that. It's not just on us.
Mr. Morrow, 30 seconds, please.
A minute, 30 seconds. Great. So just to remind everyone, it's on us, too. We, as parents, this is ridiculous, that this is, today, the masks were off. This is crazy. Thank you all.
Mr. Morrow, can you just repeat what you said about the vaccinations? Because it started to echo, and I couldn't understand what you said.
Sure. So as of today, on February 22nd, they did pass. As of March 2nd, it was announced that a school nurse is allowed to provide vaccination now within the school. And it's with written consent as of right now. But there is guidance, and we know the guidance that you guys have followed in the past. There is guidance from the WHO, and I don't know if it'll be adopted in New York State or what it will be, but if you guys announce a day, let's say it's Wednesday, May 15th, that you're going to provide inoculation, that sending your kid to school that day is called implied consent. So therefore, the nurse can actually inject your child with a vaccine legally. That's insane, so we can't allow that to happen. So I just want to make sure that we, make sure that's not happening.
I understand. I just couldn't hear you. It was doubled over for some reason. Thank you.
Mr. Morrow, I can respond to that at present. There is no plan that we have right now or in the future to vaccinate any of our children. If that would ever change, we would certainly let the parents know well in advance of any decision that we made in that instance. There is absolutely no plan for that at this time.
Jeff Roth, address on file. To pick up where I left off. I'd like to know that when this year, the PTA meets the board, holds the meet-the-board candidates debate, if it's going to be live streamed, since you now have the equipment. But there's some confusion here, because whether or not you could have an event as invitation-only. So in 2018, when unanimously you voted, you sent out a letter to me that you all signed, there's a little confusion which took place during that PTA meet-the-board candidates that was held at the high school lecture hall, where for some reason, when I asked the woman if it was invitation-only, on video, she responded, yeah, actually, because she was insisting that I was not permitted to film the event, even though I filmed them in the previous years. And there was no signs posted that nobody was allowed to film. Other people had their cell phones out, but this one person just decided they didn't want me filming, okay? So there's that question about what's going to happen for this year's Board of Ed elections. So, you know, you knew when you signed that letter unanimously, you knew that there was going to be repercussions, that you didn't care, because you're not paying for the attorney fees. So let me define repercussion for you. It's the recall, sorry, recoil of something after impact. So how many times are you and your supporters that don't even take the time to speak to me directly, how many more times, when is it going to take for you to learn? You hit me, you push me, I'm going to push you back even harder. You're playing kicking sand in the face games, thinking this is your playground. This is a school tax-funded property, and you are bored, you're elected to represent and protect our interest in this public educational institutional institution. Additionally, every employee should know that their salary is approved by this elected board and funded through our school taxes. Everybody who works receives a salary, receives a salary here, works for us, the taxpayer.
One minute, Mr. Roth.
Thank you. Now, which could have been very simply answered. I'm wondering if that univentilator motor was the motor that was recently replaced, I don't know how many years ago, during your energy performance contract, or was it an old ventilator motor? Very simple question. Because if it is a new motor, then you have a couple of different problems. One, either the contractor didn't replace the motor in the univentilator like he was supposed to, or you have the potential of these new motors, whatever specifications and brand they are, could potentially fail in other univentilators. And maybe it was just a one-time occurrence, if it was the new motor. I don't know. But in order to get answers from you, which these are facility-related questions, and there's two members that are supposedly on that committee, and I asked you to give me a call as a courtesy, and you didn't give, extend that courtesy, and yet I'm supposed to respect you. Let me tell you something. I can't wait for the school board elections.
And that's your three minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else in this audience want to speak? How much you got? 20 minutes left in your public speaking portion?
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Thank you for your comments and concerns. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.